Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to our Tuesday work meeting, first one of October. Can I please ask that we read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please?
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was sent to the press in the current of Agrover Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Agrover Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board at the township hall. On Friday, October 9th, notice of the instructions for virtual streaming was posted on our website.
Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ellis? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Present by telephone? Mrs. Salaghi?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Here.
Also present by telephone? And Mr. Castellano?
Here. Thank you. Okay, we are going to salute the flag. Following the flag salute, we are going to have a moment of silence for Mr. Paul Victor Winters, a beloved member of our high school faculty. So let's salute the flag first, please.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I'd also like just to make note that there will be a remembrance for Mr. Winters that's planned for 2:00 PM this Sunday at Tony Canale Park. And we will have details on both social media and hopefully our website as well for folks who'd like to be there. Very sad passing. With that, I would like to welcome everyone again to our Tuesday first work meeting of October. October will be a very busy month for the district. Our primary mission is to complete the next phase of our Road Back. This month, we will be transitioning the remainder of our students, teachers, and staff to in-person instruction through our hybrid system of learning that we have in place, and that will be our focus. Our focus will be on a smooth and safe transition back into the buildings for our students, for our teachers, and our staff. That is our focus. So with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to our superintendent with a lot of information which relates to that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Castellano, and you're correct. A lot of information that relates to that, but I really like how you emphasize that we are working and have been working very hard to have a nice, smooth opening on October 26th and a lot of time and effort being put into this to make sure that it's just right. If you say we dot our i's and cross our t's and, you know, as we move forward. And being a large school district, there's a lot of things that have to be checked, rechecked, and, you know, before we put it in place. So I thank you for that, and I can assure you that's what's taking place. So, good evening, everyone. It's very nice to see everyone in person this evening. And just bear with us because we are spread out, social distance, we do have these masks on. It is difficult, you know, maybe for you to hear us, but we're going to do our best to project our voices. So I'd like to begin with an update regarding COVID-19 within our school district. And since July, we have learned a lot about the COVID-19 virus and what to do about potential and actual exposures. Our school district has worked closely with the Atlantic County Division of Public Health to learn about effective containment strategies and contact tracing procedures. The Atlantic County Division of Public Health is made up of a collaborative group of public health officials, nurses, and health service professionals who have communicated mostly a lot of time on a daily basis with our nurses, supervisors of nurses, and our school physician. We have partnered even before this pandemic began in March. And this work includes guidance for public communications and education, tracking local disease transmission through robust contact tracing, and supporting individuals by answering questions regarding the health, safety, and welfare of the students and staff of the Agrover Township School District. During this pandemic, as you know, we've seen, we have received information particularly from the Atlantic County Division of Public Health, and sometimes it was unclear back when this all started. And the guidance has changed through the process, but now we have received more refined and analytical guidance that is now the process that we follow on case-by-case basis. So thus far, to report, we have three confirmed cases among staff and two confirmed cases among students in the district. Each of the confirmed cases present different scenarios and guidance based on the contact tracing process. So the bottom line is the criteria for those who need to quarantine are based on mask, no mask, having contact within six feet of someone who is infected for the virus for longer than 10 minutes. This falls into the contact category, and then there's also a contact of contact category, okay? So in which no quarantine is required for that category. So here I will stress the importance of all of us working together to protect all, but also understanding the process. I also want to emphasize, and this is to staff, students, and folks who come into our buildings, work for us or visit us, what you do outside of work in the school building greatly impacts work and our school building, okay? So I encourage you, please, practice social distancing, wear a mask, wash your hands, and do not attend those large parties or gatherings where you are cross-pollinating with people from other workplaces and families. Okay, so with that said, I hope you understand that the criteria that's now being used to date as to who quarantines and who does not have to quarantine, because if we were back in July with some of these situations, we would probably see full school buildings being closed due to one case. But here we are, mid-October 2020. Criteria has more of a laser-like focus on the socialization of people and who they interact with. So our most recent cases at the Slayball School involve contact tracing and communication with the pertinent parties. If someone has not been contacted by the Atlantic County Division of Public Health or Agrover Township Nursing Supervisor, you are not considered in danger regarding these particular cases. For those of you who have any questions, again, you're encouraged to communicate with your building principal. I know there is a meeting set up with the Slayball staff tomorrow to address concerns. So, moving on to the next items I wanted to share. Since our next board meeting is going to be on October 27th, the day after we go live and in person, I want to provide everyone with some updates regarding our Road Back to School Plan. And I will reiterate it again that this plan began in July with 800 stakeholders with the Board of Education. We went through, the plan went through some revisions, and to the person who has challenged me on this, this Road Back to Plan was discussed with the county superintendent, the county curriculum instruction specialist, and was approved. I state that again, the Agrover Township School District, Road Back to School Plan was approved. This plan along with the health, safety plan was submitted to the New Jersey Department of Education, the process that all superintendent used by answering a series of questions and clicking the submit button. As you know, our opening date is October 26th, and if you have followed us through this journey, read my superintendent's weekly reports and have worked in a large school district, you should certainly understand the intricacies of a school district such large as ours, and you understand all that is needed to be done to open, as Mr. Castellano said, in a safe and smooth manner with all of our PPE that was needed, the technical logistics that had to be in place, and the understanding of our ventilation systems. I'll go back in time as I go through a journal that I keep of every day that happens here in Agrover Township. Reasons why we closed. Masks, shields, PPEs, and percentage of alcohol were not in stock. Our markings on their floors, because we have 10 schools and many, many miles of floors, were not in place. We were requested to check the ventilation system and filters. We had to do some research on the availabilities of substitutes. We had some confusion about guidance on our buses. We had a high rate during that time in the region. We were second highest in New Jersey. And there was some confusion about the Executive Order 175 where there was a statement with no indoor, the indoor capacity had misguided information, and the Atlantic County Department of Health conflicted with that guidance. Also at the time, the NJPSA, NJASA, NJEA had a collaborative letter that they put together and said, "The reopening of our schools is outside of our expertise. Absence of unclear, universal statewide health standards or recovery sources to ensure the health and safety, welfare of our students. It is not safe or advisable or achievable under the current conditions." Remember, this is back in August, way back in my book, okay? There was also conflict about an attestation form. Executive Order 175 stated that at least six feet distance between individuals of all setting to the greatest extent where the Department of New Jersey Health, or the New Jersey Health Departments on page six stated that face coverings are not a substitute for social distancing. And the county superintendent was not answering questions at the time. Thus, when I made the decision and the Board of Education approved, that we were not ready to open on September 1. And many, many things had to be put in place, and there was misguidance at that time, unclear guidance where we didn't feel comfortable bringing our students in, as Mr. Castellano said, into a health and safety, a school where there was health and safety measures provided. So with that said, I want to present to you the plan that was submitted. I also encourage you to visit the superintendent's corner where my district newsletters have kept everyone posted, also as well as our district website banners and social media where we have communicated greatly with parents, staff, and students. So just as most of the large school districts around us, I asked for the time that was needed for these protocols to be put in place, and I promised you updates. So I will provide you with an update. Please know that I am passionate about this school district. I deeply care about everyone's health, safety, and welfare, and my team and I have worked many hours to get this plan approved and in place. So, reopening plan involves 12 areas, right? So we had to implement a schedule for the 2021 school year that includes in-person instruction in some capacity and provides public school facilities with 180 days of instruction. That's as pursuant NJASA, 18A, 7F, F9. Check the box. We had implemented Phase 1 where we had an operational plan that was shared with staff for M.D., PSI, and PSD programs. Phase 2 began today where an operational plan was shared with our guidance counselors and our related service providers, all in-person services. Phase 3, which will begin on October 26th, consists of a hybrid plan of Groups A and B where synchronous teaching and learning occurs and equal access that students have to classroom teachers from school and at home. We also were required to incorporate a policy, Policy 1648, which the policy committee presented and approved, that was regarding full-time remote learning services in accordance with NJDOE. So what that basically means is you will have a group of students of Group A, a group of students of Group B who will be attending school, and then there will be a virtual group of students through the Governor's Executive Order that will be all virtual students. We also were required that each student provided at least four hours of a constructional contact per day. Check that box. We had to prepare for a potential shift back to all remote. We're ready to do that. And if we are a member of the NJSIA, we had to conduct our high school athletics program in accordance with their protocol. Check the box. We had to establish or designate in-person pandemic response teams, which we have in all of our schools. Next section, general health and safety. Provide reasonable accommodations for students and staff identified as higher risk for severe illness from COVID-19, including older adults and individuals with disabilities or serious underlying medical conditions. We have done that. Dr. Charlton has communicated with all staff and individuals and students regarding any high-risk or severe illness. Next section, classroom testing and therapy rooms. We will ensure that students are seated at least six feet apart within the classroom. Our principals have met with Dr. Hiri and reviewed many logistics pertaining to this plan, and all our classrooms have desks that are at least six feet apart, and we'll ensure social distancing for our students. We will ensure that all other instructional, non-instructional rooms will comply as well. We will ensure that hand sanitizing stations are maintained with alcohol-based sanitizer in each room. As you walked in, you passed two. I was very impressed with that. Everywhere you turn in the school district, Mr. Brunetta and his staff have installed sanitizer devices. Ensure that our existing handwashing stations are equipped with soap water and alcohol-based hand sanitizer. Check that box. Moving on to the section of transportation, we incorporated Policy 1648, which is a pandemic restart recovery plan. We will require students to wear face coverings if the student, you know, is capable of doing so. They will be required on all buses by students and staff. Maintain social distancing when possible and adopt the best practices for cleaning. Today, while I was at transportation, I was able to see the spray mixture that they will be using to sanitize the buses after the runs, and the transportation department will adhere to following protocols from the CDC. Tomorrow, Mrs. Fisher and her transportation staff will be training the transportation department, the bus drivers at Fernwood regarding the CDC protocols. Bus passes have been processed. They have been, they're being packed up, and they're going to be postmarked and mailed out sometime this week, in the next couple of days. Next section, five, student flow, entry, exit, and comment areas. It states that you need to incorporate a policy. This Board of Education has incorporated a policy, Policy 1648, which includes the processes and locations for students and staff health screenings. All our staff complete a health screening every morning. We get a text. It reminds us to check in and complete the health screening, as most of you did entering the room today. Our students will be held to the policy, our policy where their parents will assess them and do not send them to school ill or with a fever. Again, Dr. Hiri has met with all the principals, and they have discussed their student flow, their entry and exit, their pickup plans, and gatherings in certain area, how that's going to be worked. And that, what I mean by that is cafeteria, how the elementary school in terms of serving food will have cafeteria time, and the secondaries will have a grab-and-go. Next section, screening PPEs and response to students and staff presenting symptoms. So we will, and we do require students and staff to wear face masks. We've incorporated our policy. We have immediate notification to the local health department and to our COVID action team, if you will, our pandemic team. We've isolated symptomatic individuals, and we make contact with Board of Health who does that contact tracing process. Check that box. Regarding re-admittance of policy consistent with relevant of the NDHOH plan is where students may return to school only after they've seen a medical doctor and provide a note, to be clear, of the COVID-19 virus. Moving on to the next section of contact tracing. I explained how that has been working here regarding our collaboration with the Atlantic County Division of Public Health. That has changed over the last couple of months, but we are proud to say that, you know, we are now at a point where we understand it's being implemented and we are following that process. It also says here that we should have isolation rooms that are ventilated and determined by school district criteria. So all of our schools have isolation rooms that are designated for anyone who comes down with any symptoms and need to wait for a ride and go home. Next section, facility and cleaning practices. We have developed the procedure manual. It's to establish schedules for cleaning and disinfection. Mr. Brunetta led that, and that was in place in March. Next section, meals. I did cover that when I said that we are going to serve meals to the elementary students, grab-and-go for the secondary students, and we will continue our delivery and pickup services for food. Next section, recess and physical education. We've discussed this with all our principals and supervisor of physical education, that recess, phys ed, and outdoor activities such as band rehearsals will follow all requirements for social distancing. Field trips, extracurricular activities, and use of facilities outside school hours. There are no field trips. Regarding external community organizations that the district facilities are used, at this time, external community organizations are not permitted to use district facilities. When we transition to permitting the public to use facilities, district procedures, health and safety protocols will be shared and mandated. I shared with the Board of Education that NJ, we are aware of, I should say, Executive Order 187 where the governor is allowing indoor sports to occur with certain capacity limitations. I also shared that being a member of the NJSIA executive committee, that we have a meeting tomorrow at 11 o'clock. So I anticipate that this organization that governs our athletics in the state of New Jersey is going to support Executive Order 187, but I want to hear the particulars as it relates to each particular sport, from swimming to wrestling to basketball. I also want to hear the opinions, if you will, of the Atlantic County Superintendents of High Schools, which that meeting occurs on Thursday. Once I get that information, I can provide direction for our athletic staff and what we're going to do with use of facilities, okay? So just give me a couple more days for that. Okay, the last two things. We're going to have presentations this evening, and these are two areas on the Road Back to School Plan that was submitted to the Department of Education and again approved by the Department of Education. But I promised the Board of Education through this process that I would do some research and then report back to them. So the section where it says, "Ensure that indoor facilities have adequate ventilation, including the maintenance of operational, of the HVAC systems, ensuring that recirculated air has fresh air component, and that the operation of windows, if AC is not provided, is being used, that we're maintaining our filters for HVAC units, and that we are in accordance with the manufacturer recommendations." Check the box. I'm going to have Mr. Tim Brunetta explain more, as I also explained that part of the Road Back to School Plan has us ensuring that there are physical guides and markings to help ensure that staff and students remain at least six feet apart in lines and enter and exit the building and require utilization of the face cover. Mr. Brunetta personally lined every school building in this school district. 10 schools over six miles of yellow tape, that's what, maybe not even a half inch wide, that when I tell you is straighter than a ruler. It's amazing. And he did that himself. He takes pride in his work, but he also takes pride in the school district and how things look. So if you ever have the opportunity to walk through your buildings, and I do all the time, I think of Tim. I was like, man, how the heck do you do that? Your knees have to be sore, your arms have to be sore, but he did it, and it's amazing to see. We also did a lot of research, and I've had many conversations with Tim regarding our ventilation systems. We've met with the architect and the engineer many times, and most recently we met with the Agrover Township Education Association representatives, and we've just completed a tour of the building, of all of our buildings. So we have a great grasp on what our buildings entails in terms of our HVAC system, and I'll have Tim come up and, you know, present to you information, but what you're going to see is that we are in accordance with manufacturer recommendations. And we have 10 schools, and they're all different. But the work of this man and the knowledge that he has puts it all into perspective and allows us to understand that we are in a good place and able to check that box, which we did. So Mr. Brunetta is Director of Facilities here in the district, and he is going to present to you HVAC facts regarding COVID-19.
Good evening, everybody. Of course, I want to apologize for my dress. Sometimes my job gets me a little dirty, so I keep what I call play clothes in the car. Today was one of those days, so I apologize for the way I'm dressed. Basically, the information I want to share with you is I understand that Dr. Gucio is asking me to come here because a little clarification was needed. I'll try and be as brief as I can, as informative as I can, obviously.
Mr. Brunetta, only because there's two board members on the actual conference call over there, if you don't mind presenting from that podium? I know your back will be towards the board, but just so that people, everybody can hear. Thank you.
I won't touch anything. Okay, very good. And I will apologize if I'm squinting a lot because when I put these glasses down with this mask on, I can't see anything. So I'll try and move through this. So, basically, what I'd like to share with you is what's going on in the district with regard to our HVA systems, facts about what we have going on, and basically what we're doing in accordance with the Road Back guidance. And in some cases, in many cases, we actually exceed it, but I wanted to explain that to you. So, basically, in the district, we have 10 school buildings, as you know, about 1.3 million square feet of school. The construction of these buildings ranges almost 100 years, so we go back from 1914 to approximately 2012. Now, some of the HVAC systems, believe it or not, not since 1914, obviously, but some of these systems are actually original construction to these schools. Now, this slide may look a little familiar to the board because I presented this last year budget time, just to give you an idea of how many large HVA systems we have and their age. So approximately 662 units, some, as I've said, the size of that podium, and some the size of a tractor-trailer body, but these are the types, or the number of units that we have. And you can see 57% are 17 to 19 years old. Average life expectancy is 20 to 25 years. We have 31% that are 20 years or older. We actually have some units that are almost 40 years old. Now, you say to yourself, well, why are we talking about that now? It'll become more apparent as I move through. So now, design elements, typically when HVAC is all put together, there are certain things that a designer, many things, but there's some specific ones I want to talk about that they take into consideration. One is obviously the size of a room, the cubic feet. They've got to move so much air into a space, they've got to move so much air out of a space. How many occupants typically occupy a room? What percentage of air we're going to exhaust back out into the atmosphere, and how much air we're going to bring in, fresh air into a space? How many times in a minute are we going to exchange the air within that space to keep it in a healthy standard? And of course, recommended filter use. These are all the key things that HVA system designers, engineers, think about when they're designing these spaces. Now, the Road Back guidance specifically states that we are, and Dr. Gucio said this a couple of minutes ago, that we have to ensure that their indoor facilities have adequate ventilation, including operational heating and ventilation systems where appropriate. Well, we have that everywhere. I hope you realize that. I don't believe there's a space in this district that does not have HVAC. And in addition to, and even though it's not really our situation, but in addition to, a window in your office is considered proper ventilation, just for code compliance. But we have above that. We have windows, obviously, everywhere, but in addition, we also have forced heating and cooling systems like you see in this room. Now, our normal operations here, this is what we do every day, okay? Preventative maintenance. We're doing filter changes. Now, we currently use MERV 8, and we'll talk about that more a little bit later, but this is what's recommended by our manufacturer. Almost every HVAC system that's spec'd in a school environment, they recommend using between a MERV 5 and a MERV 8. We use a MERV 8. We program review our BIS programming, when systems come on, when they go off, how much air we take in, how much we exhaust. All that stuff is controlled. We check that weekly. Checking MDF, IVF, HVAC inspection, we do that weekly. Condensate drain and coil service, we do it annually. Boiler breakdown, cleaning inspection annually. Boiler room CO2 detector tests annually. Emergency generator exercise monthly. Bearing, lubrication, belt inspections monthly. Service, obviously, as needed. Something breaks down, we're going to jump on it right away. I put this up here to demonstrate to you, again, in compliance with the state's guidance, we have operational and functional equipment. Even for its age, we have an excellent maintenance staff here that keeps some of these very antiquated systems running and operating properly. In addition, we are going to be, we always did it one hour before and one hour after occupancy in the buildings, but to be in compliance with ASHRAI suggestions, we're going to start our systems two hours in advance of any occupancy to flush the buildings out with fresh air, and one hour after people are gone, they'll continue to run. All fresh air intake dampers programmed for a minimum. There's actually technically no designated minimum percentage, but I've been involved in a few, not here in Agrover Township, but in other districts I've been in, I've been involved in a few investigations with PIOCH, and they have always said to me for involved in a few investigations with PIOCH, and they have always said to me verbally, of course, is that they don't want to see anything less than a 10% minimum fresh air intake in any system. They always want some fresh air component brought into system. So we're at a minimum going to be doing that. Additionally, in every single rooftop, an RTU unit in this district, several years ago, under the direction of a former facility director, Henry Rodeque, were installed blue UV lights at the coils. Now, I don't know if you're familiar with that technology, but basically, it's ultraviolet light, it kills everything. It kills bacteria, it kills mold, it kills viruses, it kills everything. They are installed currently and have been for years in all of our rooftop units. In classrooms where there are no rooftop units, now, we have a lot of, and the schools are listed at the bottom of this slide, Slayball E., Davenport E., Swift and Alder, we have devices called Univents. Those are those units that are under the windows in classroom, and they pretty much serve every purpose. They bring in fresh air, they recirculate and condition air, and they exhaust air. Well, in those rooms, those units are so tight that those UV lights could not be installed inside those units. So what was done in lieu of that were these wall mounted devices, and you'll find these in all of these classrooms and all of these schools, where these devices actually have blue lights as well as ionization. So, there's an electric charge put across a field, it creates an ion field which zaps everything in addition to the blue lights. When you read the specifications from the manufacturers on these devices, they say that they're 90% effective at destroying everything in the room. Now, here I wanted to go over and kind of explain to you, because there's a lot of things I'm saying that you may not understand, but I wanted to give you something visual. Now, understand on the onset, this is just a simple graphic to try and describe what a basic HVAC system does, but I want you to understand what it is, how it works, and what it is that we are doing. So we're sitting now in this room where we are today. Now, if you look around this room, you say to yourself, well, there's supply into this room and there's return from this room. Now, your return are these small slots along the back wall. Your supply are these larger grids you see around the room. So the idea is that the air is pushed in, falls, gets cycled, and gets sucked back into the room. So on this illustration, to do a comparison, that yellow on the left-hand side is that air on the outside of this room that's getting sucked back in. When it gets sucked back into the unit, you'll see the blue arrow to the left, the light blue arrow, that's representing that fresh air component, where the system is designed to bring in a certain amount of fresh air from the outside, and it's going to mix with the air that's being brought out of this room. Now, there's actually a louver, a controlled louver on the outside of that device, that we can control how much of that is coming in. Now, when you have really great weather, you can really have that open, you can really bring in a lot of fresh air. But when you start talking about extreme times of the year where it's very, very cold or very, very hot, when you bring in that outside air, you're bringing either a lot of humidity, a lot of temperature, and sometimes it's very difficult to control what ends up happening within the room, because the system is working so hard to fight that. So, fresh air is brought in, but you've got to carefully control and modulate how much you're bringing in. Now, what happens is, is when that air gets drawn across by that fan blower motor, you're going across a filter. And as I stated earlier, we use MERV 8 here, okay? Now, the next level, what we have here, which many places do not, that blue line is your coil, but it also represents that blue UV light. So we're filtering the air, and then we're killing anything that goes across that UV light before it gets blocked back into the fan motor and pushed back into the room. Now, there's been a lot of conversation about, and a lot of concern, quite frankly, and it's legitimate, that there have been some recommendations that certain organizations would like to see us push to a MERV 13 as a minimum. Well, that's, that's good and bad, and we'll get into a little bit of detail about it, but just some basic facts. A MERV 13 is the largest filter that can fit into our RTU units, our rooftop units. A MERV 8 is the largest filter that can fit in our Univents. So the only option that we really have with regard to a MERV 13, if we were to even consider doing it, is in rooftop units. The problem is, there's a lot of drawback with that. There's a lot of negatives that come along with that. And here's the question, can't we use better filter tubes? In addition to that blue light, can't we go bigger, can we go better? Well, the answer is yes, as I just described, but at a risk. And you have to remember this, when these systems were designed, they were not designed for COVID-19. They were not designed to be hospital clean rooms. These were school units that had a certain manufacturer, a certain engineering, they were designed to use certain filters, and what happens is, is you can have negative impact by trying to change that and go beyond that. First blush is, is hey, it's going to be clean, it's going to clean the air more. Changing, and I have documentation on this if anyone wants to see it, changing from a MERV 8 to a MERV 13, which has been suggested, triples the static pressure within that unit. And you say to yourself, well, this is why I brought up the information about the age of some of these systems. You start making those systems, some of them almost 40 years old, working three times as hard, you're going to start burning out motors, you're going to have less air exchanges. Remember, the whole idea here is ventilation. It is to move, bring in fresh air and move old air out. When the system can't push that air properly, because it is not sized to do so, cannot push that air past that filter, the air is more stagnant in the room. So the very thing you're trying to help yourself with and filter the air, you're not moving the air. It's slowed to a point. And that doesn't even take into consideration the additional amperage loads. You have to remember, these units, again, designed to work at certain electrical amperages and whatnot, they're now working three times as hard, they're running more often because they're not exchanging the air fast enough, you're going to start having equipment fail. Then I ask the question, then what do we do? What do we do when we have pieces of equipment in the various parts of buildings failing? Now, no one can be in those areas, because there's no ventilation. We're now in violation of the guidelines in the Road Back Document. So, these are all things that we're taking into consideration. Starting back in March, we had these conversations, myself, Shanti, Dr. Gucio, our engineer, our architect, we've been considering these things the whole time. So in summary, we absolutely have HVAC, the mechanicals that are maintenance, they're operational, all of them per the Road Back Document. Well, it always did, but it's consistent with the Road Back Document, include the fresh air component, bringing in fresh air. All of our units are serviced quarterly with manufactured recommended, that's the manufactured recommendation, that's the designation by the Road Back Document to follow the recommendation of the manufacturer, MERV 8 filters. All of our RTUs have blue lights, all of our classroom univentilators have wall mounted or blue light purification devices. We meet the requirements, and with our blue lights, in fact, exceed the requirements by the Road Back Document.
Thank you. Check that box. Thank you, Mr. Brunetta, and as I stated, this was one component of the plan that we wanted to look into and have research done and have a presentation, meet with the individuals we had to meet with, and to assure us all that we are in compliance. So that's great, great job, I appreciate your efforts. Go get some rest, you've got more miles of tape. Okay, and the final section was the digital divide. This includes a plan outlining steps to ensure that all students are expected to engage in remote instruction, have access to requisite, the additional technology, or whether that technology is issued by the school district, provided to the school or family. And Mr. Erdabey just completed a survey today in discussion with, with myself for the Department of Education, where it asked that, have you met all requests for Chromebooks and internet service? And we are proud to say we have. So anybody asks for a Chromebook, they receive. Anybody needed assistance with anything or internet service, they receive. We also have a documented process for identifying students in need, and we, as you know, had Chromebook distribution plan in place, where we distributed many times and we collected. And then, at the end of the summer, we distributed again, and we continue to do so upon requests, and we've also go out and do wellness checks at homes and make sure that students, you know, have the technology that they need. So without further ado, we have Mr. Kevin Erdabey, the Director of our IT Department, with a presentation on technology, and over the past few months, we've had many discussions about the technology. We've done some research, we've done some experiments, so we've installed some apparatus to expand capacity, and we've been able to increase capacity, and which brings us to the revised Road Back to School Plan that we have in place in terms of academics and how we're going to deliver that to our students come October 26. So with that said, Mr. Erdabey, it's all yours, because it's agreed to me from here on in.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Gucio, for having me. Thank you, the Board. I'm here tonight to discuss bandwidth. That's like the key buzzword right now that everyone's talking about, wants to know how we're going to utilize our existing bandwidth to distribute the Road Back to School Plan and the hybrid model, and the asynchronous and synchronous models that, that you guys have presented. So, that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight, of course, and it's the big reason. Just to start off with some key factors that are determining how our bandwidth is, is one, as everyone's brought up tonight, we're a very large school district. We have about 700 teachers, 7,100 students currently. At one point, we were pushing around 7,500 students, but due to current situations, we know enrollment's been changing, fluctuating almost daily. So meeting that need with Chromebooks and other, other devices has been a challenge, of course, but I'd like to, I'm proud to say that we've been kind of meeting and meet and need and demand. With that being such a large district, the concern here with bandwidth, that things have changed since the beginning of, since the beginning of school, and with the plan has also changed. At first, we were talking about bringing in every teacher and teaching every classroom. Class sizes between 20, 25 on average, correct, with students? So what's that, what that's doing, that's putting a large increase in demand for both our staff and our student connections on a meet. So if you think of a meet, kind of like Netflix, when you're looking at a meet and you see multiple screens, each one of those is almost like an individual Netflix stream. So you're multiplying that by 700 students, I mean, 7,100 students and 700 staff. Each one of those staff connections or student connections is what's roughly equivalent to about one megabyte, according to Google statistics. Now, as we get students in and we start seeing teachers utilizing meet, which we have been seeing some coming in, we're starting to see those numbers a little lower than we expected, which is a good thing for the school district and for our network bandwidth. But that was very scary to me, at least at the beginning in August, when we were talking about bringing that many numbers in and doing that many live streams. What we didn't want to see is complete failure and loss of services to essential services like email, printing, and other things that we need for day-to-day operation. But as the plan changed, we're also doing a hybrid model where we're going to be bringing in half those students in virtually. So Cohort A might be in school one day, Cohort B is attending virtually. So you're, we're cutting that 7,100 students in half, essentially cutting all those live streams in half, which is also a positive thing for us to do, to try to attempt to meet the Road Back to School Plan. Another thing to take in effect is the supply chains right now. We've been trying to get devices and just essential, essential needs for running our network and other things that are way behind due to supply chains, due to COVID affecting factories overseas, and just simply to the high demand globally. This is not just happening in the New Jersey, South Jersey, this is happening nationwide and globally, where everyone's fighting for the same devices we are. So supply chains are months, if, at least months behind, sometimes even longer. Right now, I can't even get ETAs on some equipment. So what is bandwidth to us? What does it mean to Agarbor Township? I have a picture of like a wagon wheel up there, that kind of gives you, if you picture our network, we're built out like that wagon wheel. Each end of those spokes is a school district, and the center would be like the high school, essentially. So think of it like the state of New Jersey, and each little spoke is a separate town. In between those are roads. Most of those spokes for Agarbor Township are two-lane roads. One-lane roads are two-lane roads, like Black Horse Pike or Ocean Heights Avenue. In the center is our high school. Coming out of that is essentially a superhighway. That's our internet bandwidth. Right now, we've just increased that bandwidth from two gigs to five gigs, essentially more than doubling the speed. The problem is, where we see some issues, where we might have some issues, is going between those two-lane roads, going to each of the schools. So right now, our second largest school is our Miller School. That has around 2,100 students or so, but we're going to be cutting in that half virtual, which is a good thing. We just upgraded that as of October 9th to 10 times the speed. So that, that's a, that's a great, we got lucky with that. That was originally budgeted as part of our phase in project, as we're trying to grow and be future-ready for 10, 15 years to come. So the timing on that was perfect, but no one foresaw COVID. We would have started this five years ago if we saw COVID coming in 2020, and we'd have every school in that situation. We also have the high school at 10 gigabytes feet. So essentially, they're 10 times any other school district, any other school in our district, except for the Miller School, which we just had to happen. So some of our concerns are the middle schools. We've upgraded the fiber there, but we're still in the middle of trying to upgrade that spoke, trying to make that little two-lane road into a six-lane highway. That's our, that's our next process. And then eventually, we're going to be doing all their school and the elementarys. The elementarys have a lot smaller demand because of student population. Some of our elementary schools only have 300 students compared to the 900 at the middle schools, the 1,200 or 2,000, or 1,200 or so at Miller School, and 2,000 plus at the high school. So right now, as we see it standing today, we think we can meet those needs in the elementary schools. They have one gigabyte backbones, they're not as high as Miller or the high school, but we think we can cover that need. So what are our concerns? Just like any other city and highways, we have essential services and non-essential services. Right now, our central services, like the ambulances and medical services and police and law enforcement services, to us, it's email, infinite campus, encores, printing, Google G Suite, assessment software, HR and finance software, all of those things need to operate during the day and need to travel our network, not just out to the internet, but also within each school, between schools. Then there's non-essential services. Those are the things that are kind of the wants, the access to Netflix, the streaming, streaming music, services like that. Those are things we have to limit to try to make this successful. I like to err on the side of caution and keep everything restricted, and then grow from there. Certain things I know we can't, we can't restrict, because I know the teachers depend on it to teach our classrooms, like YouTube and other educationally related video streaming services. Games are another thing that are probably non-essential. We kind of have to cut back on those games. Other concerns we have, Wi-Fi coverage and capacity. Right now, we have pretty good Wi-Fi coverage, I'd like to say it's 100%, but there's unknowns that we haven't seen, especially at the elementary schools. A lot of times, they're not so dependent on Wi-Fi as the high schools and the middle schools are. They have BYOD devices, a lot more mobile devices, especially at the Miller School. Elementary schools don't always use Wi-Fi, the students don't have BYOD devices, so what we're finding now is teachers that come in, they're finding spaces where in the back of their classrooms, maybe the Wi-Fi isn't that good, or at the end of a hallway, and those are things we're trying to address right now. But as I spoke before, the supply chains are in very bad shape. So getting equipment to address that has been one of the challenges, and so has been funding. Fortunately, Digital Five funding has just came about. What we've been purchasing with the digital divide funding are ethernet dongles and adapters and cables. What that's going to allow us to do is to quickly address spaces that don't have good Wi-Fi, where they can plug into their Chromebook and plug into a network wall jack and not depend on the Wi-Fi. Another thing we purchased, we purchased 200 webcams, so that'll also address Wi-Fi issues. We can quickly put a webcam on, on a classroom computer, which every classroom has a computer, to quickly address any issues that might happen in that space. The other thing that just came in today, I got 20 more access points, it doesn't sound like a lot, but most of the spaces where we're seeing problems are at the elementary schools, and it's at the end of the hallways, and there are lots smaller schools, so we're going to try to put some access points out there. They take a, they're a little harder to do than an ethernet dongle, but we can still get those in time, we have two weeks, so fortunately, they came today. Unfortunately, the ethernet dongles, I order 200 of those, I just heard today, they might be in next week. So these are the struggles I'm dealing with, we're dealing with vendors, they're pulling from different supply resources. We saw that with headsets is another assistive technology we just bought. Our first order was told December, now it's, we found another model, I personally ordered some models to try off Amazon. We tested them out, we found one pretty good model. Our vendor's going to try and pull from Amazon, different Amazon resources to get 800. That's the difference, where if I'm ordering from, personally, I can buy three of them very easily. I can't buy 800 from Amazon. So those are, those are the challenges that we continue to face with devices, bandwidth, doing this Road Back to School Plan. Even the devices, we, we did get a lot of teacher devices in, which has been great. The teachers are using them, they have webcams, that's where they're going to try to present their classroom for the streaming. The problem is, those fail too. I got exactly 700 of those. I've already had a couple failures out of box, maybe five. The problem is, they can't get me replacements under warranty, they can't even get me parts. So, so that's why we're taking all these extra steps to try to address these issues with workarounds. Are they perfect? No. Will they keep people working? Some other things to consider is, especially if there's any staff watching around, or any staff in the audience, is do not wait until October 26th to check your classroom. I can't stress that enough. A lot of people have not been into the building, some people have not been into the buildings or checked their classrooms. If they, if we don't know about the issue and they haven't come in and set up their classroom, there's no way, we can't check every space. I have 13 people, half my people are data team, half are engineers, we're doing all we can in every aspect and coming up with plans, and supporting the people that have been in and have been checking their spaces. We get calls every day, and fortunately, we're seeing a lot more people coming right now, which has been excellent. Like a lot of the elementary teachers coming to set up their rooms, they're finding issues, we've had some Wi-Fi ethernet dongles that we've given out, and they've been very successful. So anyone that hasn't come into their classroom yet, if you could do it between now and October 26th, that would be great. Do not do it on October 26th, because I know we will be getting a lot of calls, we'll[1794.71] We'll be very stressed out and very, very exhausted at that time, and we can't, we can't reach any, like I said, 700 teachers. We can't be at everyone's classroom at the same time. And if you do find issues, of course, contact the help desk to address any issues as soon as possible. Everyone knows the email and our phone extension, help desk extension, and we could come out there and try to address the issue either with Wi-Fi dongle webcam, or if we have access points available, which are the Wi-Fi access points, we can address that in your classroom. Just going forward, we've been, I know it sounds pretty restrictive what we're trying to put in place, but we're trying to make this as successful as possible. And working with Mr. Santilli, the PD Committee, we've been trying to balance those restrictions, but also not prevent the teachers from teaching their classroom. We've offered a lot of recommendations on how to control meet, but the, the plan is to start out restrictive, and as we see true data come across, not just what Google's recommending, we're hearing it from other districts too, that the estimations have been lower than they expected, as we see true data and true numbers across our network, we can start to expand and loosen those restrictions. And that's the hope, you know? It might not be 100% open like it's always been in the past, but we can allow other services that we might have pulled back on and hope to provide, you know, grow into a better teaching environment, virtual learning environment. Yeah?
Thank you.
That, that was wonderful, Mr. Erdaby. Appreciate your knowledge. You know, you're working hard.
Thank goodness. Again, his knowledge and passion, we're very fortunate to have, because it is very intricate. And as you can see, we've come a long way over the last month and a half in terms of what the plan was and what it's going to be, and that involves people giving their 110% effort, digging deeper, and digging out of the box and make things happen. So, just so you know, next week, on Tuesday and Wednesday, we'll have a group of teachers coming in, and then Thursday and Friday, a group of teachers coming in to do, not only set up their classrooms, but to teach from the classrooms, so we can see how things go and what needs to be adjusted, who needs some of these items that Kevin mentioned to better assist them, okay? So, we'll be doing some test runs next week, and that's again, to make sure we have that smooth opening. So, I hope tonight that we provided with relevant info, information regarding the road back to school plan, as well as a reminder of the reasons why we delayed. Basically, what it came down to was the health, safety, and welfare of our students and staff. We have revised plans along the way, and please know that those revised plans have been shared with the Department of Education, and we are still in the approval mode. I encourage you to tune in now to our school district website, as well as our social media sites. Mrs. Mullen has created learning videos for parents and students that are going to begin rolling out. Again, our social media sites will have them, but I ask you all to please, let's stay positive on those social media sites. If you have a question, please give us a call or an email. We are here for you to answer your questions and concerns. Getting involved in negative argumentative back-and-forths on social media does not solve the problem. Overall, please know that we do care, and we too want what's best for your child. And I think you can see, because of our size and how large our school district is, that maybe it took us a little bit longer to get where we are, but I sit here today and say that we are hashtag EHT ready, and of course, hashtag EHT proud. And with that, Mr. Castellano concludes my superintendent's report, and I turn the meeting over to you. Thank you.
I just want to thank you so much, Dr. Gruccio, for all the hard work, you, Ms. Anaya, all of the administration and staff that worked so very hard on our road back plan. So much effort went into this, and again, to emphasize what our goal is, a safe and smooth return for our students, for our teachers, and for our staff. And as Dr. Gruccio stated, this remains a living document. It allows for us to adjust to changing conditions, to changing requirements that come down our way, whether from the state or the county or otherwise, and also to make adjustments as needed. If there's improvements that we see that can be made, things that are working and things that are not working, we're able to make those adjustments as we go to constantly improve. So, again, I just want to thank everyone so much for their hard work. We all have the same very important goal in mind, and because this is so important, I'm going to just, you know, break from our usual sequence, and I'm going to just see if any board members would like to question or comment, have any questions or comments on our road back before we move on.
I could have a question when you're ready.
Sure, and what I, what I thought I'd do is I'll just go down, you know, I'll just go through, and I'll start with Mr. Delbarca, and I'll just ask each board member.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, great comment, is that I feel very proud of all the people who have done this great job. It's so impressive to see the great work that has been done. I think, starting with Dr. Gruccio and all her team, our great teachers and staff, and all of the folks presenting tonight, we're very proud of all of you, and I think we're going to have a great opening. I look forward to see how things work out next week, when the people are actually in the buildings and the kids are in. I think the children are going to be thrilled, I know the parents will be, and I guess just a big thank you from myself, I'm sure from all the board members, for the outstanding work you all do. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Tamika.
I could just say that I definitely agree with what Mr. Delbarca just stated in reference to, I'm sure the countless hours of hard work, time, preparation, and probably time away from their families that they've spent to get a district of our size up and running. And a lot of the questions that I, I did have, or is, and more so, not so much as questions, but just inquiries in reference to just making sure that the return to school is a safe one, with the information that was presented tonight. I feel as though it did answer a lot of my questions in reference to just making sure that we, we were ready to receive the students and ready to receive the staff members back safely, and kudos to everyone. And I just wanted to also just to say that, I guess for me, I think of just our level, I know we heard technology and cleaning and the HVAC system, and a few things that Dr. Gruccio mentioned, but I was thinking about the office, the school offices that are high frequent traffic areas, just to make sure that we had our, you know, any Plexiglas or barriers that we may have for secretarial staff, just to make sure we had those things in place and just our massive amounts of PPE in case for those students or staff members who may come to school, or come to work, forget their mask or need it. I guess that's just, just something, I just want to make sure that we, that we're definitely on top of that, to make sure we have all of the proper PPE in place for our teachers, students, and staff members to return. And it looks like, I feel, I feel as though we're on, we're on that road back, and I'm assuming that we definitely have those orders, those items ready to go as well. I guess that's my question, concern, just to make sure we have that in place too, along with our technology and all the other items that were mentioned.
We're good? Thank you. If you'd like.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, regarding the PPEs, we are in good shape, it's in stock. Ms. Anaya is on top of that. Anything that's requested from the teachers and staff have been ordered, and facilities will deliver, put them in place. Yep. I'm confident that we have what we need for students and staff to be safe.
Thank you. Very good, very good. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President, and great presentation. Learned a lot, answered a lot of questions, but I do have a couple of quick questions, not to get too technical, but they would be for Kevin. When we talk about the bandwidth and things of that nature, does a, does a laptop, a Wi-Fi take more bandwidth than a computer that's actually plugged into an Ethernet cable? And do we have more Wi-Fi, or do we have more that are plugged in the cables currently in most of the buildings?
Yeah. Between the laptop and a PC using bandwidth, they're going to use the same amount of bandwidth. It depends on what they're connected to, how many screens they have open, how many tabs, there's so many factors that go into it.
Because I notice at home, my computer runs better when I'm plugged into the Ethernet.
Yeah, and that, that's always a good factor, because there's outside circumstances that are going to affect Wi-Fi. One, how close are you to the Wi-Fi router? Is there any other interference? Believe it or not, like cordless phones, if people sell cordless phones, mic waves, they use certain frequencies, and your device might use the same frequency, especially the 2.4 gigahertz frequency is more commonly used with old devices versus the 5 gigahertz. So, you, you do get interference from that as well, too. Also, the throughput of your Wi-Fi router at home, or even in the school, might not, might not exceed what your cable, what your cable connection could be. Most likely, your cable connection and your device plug in at one gigabyte speed, and depending at the end of the, depending on the year or age of your device, your Wi-Fi might not be able to max out that speed. But, you might not have a one gig connection from your internet at home in general, most people at home do not. And there's also other factors, that time of day, there's demand at certain times of days, kind of like the roads coming from each school that have, there's certain traffic at peak times.
That kind of leads me to my next question.
Yeah.
Is what we have at the buildings, we use our own servers, from what I understand, but are they similar to Comcast? Do we, how do we connect to the buildings? Do we go through phone lines? Do we go through Comcast?
No, we use like, we basically use like cellular antennas. We're using the same services right now. What we put at Miller School is the same thing that T-Mobile uses for 5G LTE. Yes. Yeah, so we're, we're at that rate, which is, there's positives to that. We own that equipment, so we're not leasing the lines.
That was my, yeah, that's a good thing.
Yeah, so, so we, we get a certain return on ownership after a certain, after a couple of years, it's, they've already paid for themselves, and most of these systems, we exceed 10 years with them.
But, the way you explained it, it's, it's similar to like with Comcast in our neighborhood. Sometimes, you have, the more people come on, it can bog down, it can slow down. That didn't happen here.
But, that can happen locally.
It's kind of our own network.
Our internet connection, though, is not like that. We have dedicated 5-g metro Ethernet, so it's fiber coming to the building, and it's dedicated up and down 5-g.
Okay.
So, that, that shouldn't be affected, but the more people you get online and the more students connecting, obviously, that's your traffic. That's, that's where you're getting slowdowns, you know, where you, but to, put too many cars on the road, that's what's happening right there with smaller roads. So, the bigger we make those roads, the more cars we can get on that highway, you know?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I just have one more fast question. It would be, I guess, for Dr. Gruccio. We covered a lot of good information about the road back. I was just curious if you could be more specific on the meals. Are there going to be any changes to the way the meals are being delivered? There going to be more, there going to be less? Is everything going to be distributed the way they are now to the, to the towns and the communities and the, and the areas of the township?
Yes, we will still distribute. We had that discussion today, you know, and Ms. Anaya can comment even more in terms of the numbers. So, we have an idea of who's coming back to school physically, we have those numbers, and we have an idea of who we serve, so, in terms of delivery and pickup. So, students will still have that option, but we're hoping that folks understand, when you come into school, you'll, you'll get that lunch that day, that you can carry if you're a secondary student, and if you are an elementary student, that you will be served lunch in school. So, Ms. Anaya.
So, you'll make some adjustments to who is in school and who's not?
Correct. Ms. Anaya, I don't know if you have any more comments, because you work closely with, with the department as we refine our operations as we approach the 26th.
How many meals are we up to also, if you would give me that?
Sure, so today, actually, go ahead, I'm sorry. I'll look that up while you do that.
Okay.
But, the plan is pretty much.
Actually, that's part of my report. There's 18,000.
Last week was 18,000. Okay. And this week, we were closer to 16,000, to four-day week. It's a little lower, but four-day week, five-day week.
Okay.
We've been, last year was averaging about 10,000 a week. This year, we're hovering between 17 and 18,000.
Okay.
So, we're doing really great, getting the word out, but again, with, you know, over 7,000 students, everybody can eat free. So, I'll repeat that, everybody can eat free, so you don't have to be on free or reduced. It's on our website. We do deliveries every Monday, if there's a holiday, it's a Tuesday. You can also pick up at Alder High School and Davenport locations, so.
Okay, that's good information. Thank you very much. That's all.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Price. Mrs. Sullivan.
I'm going to direct my remarks to our facility director. Myself, Mr. Ellis, and Mrs. Salagi were able to take a little trip over to a couple of the schools to see how the kids were doing. We observed your fine work on the lining and on the circles. I mean, it's, it was astounding, the way the, every hallway is lined, the distance dots. We, the teachers have been so innovative, they've actually put the cafeteria, they've put dots on the benches, so that the students who are having lunch sit six feet apart. We saw in classrooms where they put up shower curtains in between working areas, so that the students could see each other, but they were totally separated from them. I was very encouraged as far as we brought in, I don't want to say the hardest population, but we brought in a population that has a lot of needs, and we're handling those things so wonderfully that when the students come in, I'm fully confident that we're going to do really, really well. So, I just want to give kudos to the teachers, to the parents that are in, to our facility department. A lot of this is in my report for finance, I might as well do it now. As far as the 18,000 meals that we're putting out, half, a lot of those are grabbing goes, a lot of those are distributing the food. It's, it's just incredible. Every aspect of the township has, or the school district, I'm sorry, has come together and put all their pieces together to make a really nice whole. So, I want to commend all of our staff that has been working diligently to do this, all the administrators, cafeteria workers, all of your facility people. I, we actually even saw them going down the hallways with their spray packs, where they're doing the hallways in between students being in the hallways. It, it's just been really incredible. I'm very, very encouraged.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Sullivan. Mrs. Summer.
Do I leave anything for you? So, first, I wanted to echo what all the other board members have said. I want to thank the administration for working so hard. I know that this was not an easy path. I'm very appreciative as well, you know, I know that a lot of the members of the community are appreciative too, that students that are choosing to go all virtual are able to livestream into the classroom, so that, you know, they feel like they're not missing out on anything, and they're still part of, you know, their class base and still learning. I do have a question, though. On average, how many students do you see being in a classroom at one time?
So, according to our data, it looks like we have 70, approximately 70% of our population coming back. Do some quick math, 35% will be in for your Group A, 35% of your Group B. So, we're anticipating 10, maybe, 10, nine, give or take, in, in a classroom?
So, and that's across the board, middle school, high school as well?
Varys based on grade level and class.
Yeah, it's going to vary based on grade level and class size, but yes, I guess to say on an average, because, you know, remember, there's different class sizes, particularly the high school, in singleton classes versus electives and required classes and all that. But, overall, yes, that's what we're looking at, approximately nine, 10 students.
So, I'm just wondering, you know, with, I know that, you know, class, class room, the sizes of the classrooms vary, you know, are these nine, 10, possibly a few more, depending upon different grade levels, going to be able to socially distance and maintain that six feet apart width that they're supposed to maintain? I just wanted to, you know, I thought it up before, I just wanted to put it out there one more time. We've brought it up in curriculum, you know, those Plexiglas barriers are just an extra level of protection. I just am worried that the students are not really going to be able to maintain that six feet distance, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, well, that's our plan, to have them masked up and maintaining social distance. They're going to have a cleaning protocol, wiping desks, using sanitation, and, you know, that's part of the logistics that the principals have in place in the building. They'll be making announcements frequently to, to remind them of social distancing, and we're also hoping that parents would partner with us in educating students just. And we're also hoping that parents would partner with us in educating students, just like as we do if we're going out in public, to, you know, keep, maintain a distance and keep your mask on and, you know, be cognizant of who you socialize with and how you're socializing.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Summer, Mrs. Solagi.
Well, since Mrs. Sullivan pretty much said everything that I feel, as far as us doing the buildings, it's very obvious that a lot of planning and hard work has gone into it. And facilities was great, the staff that was there, they were all excited and just showing us the things that they've come up with on their own, for their own safety and for the students. And IT department, you're the best. So I just want to thank everybody for all the work that they've put into on the road back to school, because the kids really want to come back. Excuse me.
Thank you very much, and Mrs. Bird.
Thank you. I also want to thank everyone, it's just the feat that was placed in front of administration and our staff. It's, it's just unreal and the hard work that you've done and the dedication that you've shown at all the township and the community is something to be really proud of. And I know that a lot of people appreciate it. And there's always going to be those naysayers on mine who, you know, who can only focus on the negative. But I believe the positive in our community, we are supporting you, we're supporting your decision. So thank you. I have two questions regarding the restricted website access that is occurring. Is there a resource that teachers can access prior to us going back so that they can ensure that any tools that they were going to use aren't going to be blocked come instructional time? That is my first question. My second question, I think you answered, but I couldn't hear properly. What was the percentage of students that are coming back hybrid versus the percentage of virtual, based on the most recent survey? And finally, I just want to, it's not a question, more of a comment. I just want to thank all the staff members who have been coming into work up to this point. You've been really the leaders in the district on, you know, on coming back, even though this pandemic is still going on. And, you know, that's not easy, and we all appreciate it greatly. We appreciate the sacrifices that you've made. So thank you so much, and hopefully kids will value education in person instruction so much more. So maybe that's the positive that came out of this negative negative side. That's it, thank you.
Good, I can, I'll address Mrs. Bird's questions. The first question is restricted access. If we are going to provide what those areas will be as a resource for teachers, we have a teaching and learning operational plan that'll be going out and shared with the teachers and that will be listed in that plan so that they could review that and see that information and be able to plan accordingly from there. And the percentage of students, based on our survey, I'll keep it simple and say 70, 30. 70 to return, 30 all virtual. Okay? And I do agree with your acknowledgement of the staff that's been in. You know, they, they've done a great job to service our students and really have paved the path for October 26th. So thank you for your efforts, and I appreciate the acknowledgement.
Okay, thank you all very much, and yes, yeah, I want to second that as well. Our, our staff, we've had staff, of course, in, working all through the summer. And then, of course, some of our teachers began in some of our rooms, in our special ed. And now we're preparing for the, the rest to return in October. So thanks to those who led the way, both staff and, and faculty. And we are ready for the, for return of all. Now, we are going to move ahead into finance and operations. So this will be a little more of a familiar segment of our meeting. And I'll ask for our finance and operations committee report, please.
Most of my report has already gone out through different speakers tonight. But our meeting was on October 6th. In attendance was myself, Barbara Solagi, Ray Ellis, Michael Price, and Shonda Anaya. Again, as I said, I'm going to go through this really briefly because we have discussed most all of it. Another thing that IT has done, they've given every employee in the district an email. This way, you know, the, the food service, facilities, custodial staff, so this way, everybody can be in touch with everybody, which I think is a great plus, but thank you very much on that. Let's see, EB Fence has given us a donation of $3,500 for Miller Virtual Learning. So we appreciate that, and them. Transportation, yes, we do have 70% students coming back, 30% virtual. But we also have 700 potential children that are going to be driven every day. So transportation really has a job on their hands, not only with busing their children, but figuring out traffic patterns throughout each building. So they've been working hard on that. Let's see, we did food service. All of the vestibules are completed, which is something we've all anticipated in the facility department to ensure the safety of all of our students and staff. We've received some grants from CARES. Digital Divide, which is going to go for Chromebooks, Hot Spots. The Coronavirus Relief Fund, which is going for PPE headsets and more Chromebooks. And lastly, Ms. Michael Price brought up the fire alarm system. We had a discussion about that and different calls that were made, different false alarms that have gone off. So we had a good discussion about that. And our last discussion, which is our biggest discussion, which I would like to present to the whole board, is that we have a special request to open up the swimming pool for the Seahawks. This is kind of important for us to get a resolution tonight from the administration so that hopefully, after we have a discussion, we'll all be happy with that. Bringing back the Seahawks so that they can practice in our swimming pool. This is a special circumstance, and it's because there's no pools available anywhere else. So hopefully, we can have a, you know, discussion with everybody about what they think about this, and we can get it on the books. So, anybody have anything to say or any comments?
Mrs. Sullivan, I'm going to comment because I respectfully request that I have those two meetings before I make any decision about, about the use of facilities. So it would be tomorrow with NJ SIA, and then the next day with the high school principals, so, the superintendents. And then I'll have a better understanding of what the requirements would be. I know that Seahawks has submitted an outstanding protocol for flow, entrance, exit, and cleaning procedures, very impressive. And I just want to make sure that, you know, it aligns with the information I'm getting from NJ SIA.
Okay, so would we have to wait until our next meeting?
No, I'll make that decision.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the administration on finance?
Sure, I'll add, thank you for that, Mr. Castellano. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan, for your report. I do want to invite the board members as part of the report, but if you missed it, tomorrow is, um, the trainings we've been doing, we were doing small group trainings with food service as they returned. The driver training, we had two different sessions already, a smaller group of those who are driving now, but the rest of them are going to be trained tomorrow at Fernwood's auditorium at 9:30. If you wanted to attend, just let me know. We have just one other item that was discussed, was ASSA count is in two days, is the application for state student aid. We're doing that virtually this year, it's when we count the butts and seats. Where is every student in the state of New Jersey? And that's going to be an interesting task that we are looking forward to. Mrs. Sullivan covered the rest, I will just now cover, I will just now, sorry, I realized I wasn't using my mic. I will just now cover the board member questions, they got the agenda on Friday. They have a chance to look at the agenda over the weekend and ask any questions related to the agenda. Specific for finance, we're having questions about transfers on the agenda for the 1920 school year. We are closing out our books, auditors are scheduled to come in the next week or so. And just going through just some cleanup, looking at some things and getting us ready for that, to ratify, for the board to ratify those transfers. The $3,500 mentioned earlier from EB Fencing, the question came, what is it used for? The original letter from EB Fence said they wanted to give it to Miller's Renaissance Program to help with staff and students' virtual learning. After speaking with Mr. Battersby, and back to EB Fencing, we've received grants since his initial contact with us. So now he'll just be giving it to the Miller Renaissance Program as a whole, just for them to continue with rewarding and recognizing students at Miller. And not really finance, but I'll throw it in there, maybe because of contracts, but physician, our school physician to get scripts for testing if we have situations in our schools. But there are tests available without scripts available for staff and students on Alwenny Keddie's website. That's what I have the script for. And we will be taking action on the one item for professional development that happens before the next meeting.
Okay, any other comments on finance and operations from anyone? All right, so seeing none, what I'm going to do then is, we are going to take action on 5.2, correct?
That's correct.
So I'm going to ask for a motion on 5.2.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Maybe we have roll call.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move into curriculum, and I'll ask for our curriculum committee report, please.
Okay, um, thank you. On October 6th, 2020, the curriculum committee met. In attendance were myself, Mr. Santilli, Mr. Price, Mrs. Bird, Ms. Moss, Mr. Delabarka, and Ms. Elko. Items that will be needing board approval, the high school field of bi-literacy programs for 2021 school year. The Council on International Education was changed for the 2021 school year. Scholarship winners from 2020 were permitted to defer their scholarships for the summer of 2021. New applications will be expected until January 15th. And if you staff members will be receiving professional development in the month of October and November. And non-agenda, non-agenda items that were discussed, the National Center for Educational Statistics was chosen the Miller Schools to participate in testing between January 25th and March 19th. SAT testing will be held at the high school on multiple dates from November through June. Meal cheer routine will be held virtually. This event is funded through the NJEA Pride Grant. Jackson University is offering virtual homework help free of charge to students in kindergarten through 12th grade. Special education operational plan has been developed and implemented for in-person testing. Phase one of reopening schools, which includes special education, multiply disabled, preschool disabled, and preschool inclusion was reviewed and discussed. Phase two, to include special education, in-person related services, and counseling services was reviewed. And phase three is currently being scheduled and will formally begin for students during the week of October 26th. Remote teaching and learning expectations have been sent to all teachers and students. The 2021 student growth objectives were discussed and communication was sent to all staff members. And RCI data has been reviewed. Our next meeting is scheduled for November the 3rd. So that concludes my report, but I will ask the Southmistress Santilli if he has anything he would like to add.
Thank you, Ms. Summer. First, thanks to the board for the one item for action that was actually covered in Ms. Summer's report in regards to professional development. Also, there was an additional question that came in in regards to, and it was a good conversation we had in regards to individual student desk barriers during our meeting. I did send an email late in the day today, I apologize, but I wanted to get some pictures as well. And, and part of that was to be able to really just provide a visual for a lot of the items that we discuss quite often that maybe you don't have an opportunity to see. So the vinyl, there's larger vinyl dividers as part of that communication to the curriculum committee. And ultimately, they have been placed primarily in PSD, preschool disabled classrooms, as well as some MD programs as needed. In addition, there's another picture of a clear acrylic tabletop barrier that was a pass-through. You see those quite often probably in stores. However, that's used for a lot of related service providers when testing is, is needed. And in addition to that, the PSI and PSD staff do have individual barriers. There was another picture of that to be used in a classrooms. And then the MD programs have them on an as-needed basis. A lot of that guidance was, was from the CDC in regards to students that may struggle or have difficulty in wearing a face mask, especially within those programs, and providing that extra layer of protection. And I had also shared that we're certainly taking a look, and we will continue to support. So should it be arise, especially in some of the MD classrooms that we discussed, of course, individual student barriers would, would continue to be provided if that need is there. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Is there any other question or comment on curriculum from anyone?
I want, Mr. President, I'm wondering if Mrs. Bird's going to comment? Is she still with us? Because she raised the question at our meeting. Kristi, are you still there?
Yeah, no, no, you can go, Lou.
No, I wanted you to comment, because I know you raised the question and you had another question today also.
Yeah, so we had, yeah, we just talked that much during our curriculum committee meeting, the use of, of dividers for our multiple disability classrooms because of the nature of having our professionals hand over hand with students. And we had talked at lunch as, you know, the committee, about how we feel like it would add to the safety of our staff and our students. Since then, you know, as she said, that, you know, they're recommending that it be a case-by-case status basis, but that the 3K programs were provided with these things. So I, I agree with Ms. Summer when she said earlier that having those dividers, you know, do feel like an extra precautionary measure that would be helpful. But I do appreciate that they are very expensive and, you know, if we went district-wide with them, what will we use them for in the future? So I do want, I'm hopeful that if teachers find a need, if, if students are struggling with those masks, that process to obtain those dividers is easy, and they don't have to go through a lot of red tape to get them.
And Mr. President, I just wanted to add to thank Mrs. Santilli because he sent us a detailed report to help us understand more about what the, what PPE and, you know, different precautions are being taken at all the levels. But we, we were most determined because of the preschool at that time, the MD classes. And I believe, Steve, your report really covered everything, and I'm real pleased with the answer. I think all of us on the committee are feeling a little bit better after we got that report. So thank you for that.
No problem.
Thank you. Anyone else on curriculum?
Mr. Price, I just want to make one comment. You're absolutely right, Lou. Mr. Santilli, thank you for being specific, bringing us up to date on that. And it's something that we are considering, and it hasn't been overlooked, and we're continuing to, to work on that, so, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I... Yes?
I have one more question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Castellano, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure that I heard that correctly, that all preschool and D rooms currently have those dividers in place.
So, so currently, the, all of the preschool inclusion and preschool disabled rooms have been provided the individual student desk barriers. In addition to that, they have the larger, let's say vinyl PVC barriers that I sent a picture of as well to the committee. And then, of course, for testing purposes, you know, we have the pass-through individual barriers. A lot of times, that's going to be used for speech therapy and so on. A lot of times that's gonna be used for speech therapy and so on. One of the things we are taking a look at in the PSD program is possibly adding that for discreet trials. So that is possibly the last layer that would occur just for the PSD rooms.
Okay, so just so I'm clear. So every student in a preschool, MD, and inclusion classroom setting has a clear divider or they have some dividers in the room, but not for everyone, because I'm confused, sorry.
So my understanding and the delivery that occurred was one individual student barrier for every student in the classroom. If that is not the case, then a staff member should immediately contact their direct supervisor or principal and let us know if they are assured, for instance, so then that way that can be provided.
Oh, great, okay, perfect. So if there is a hit-up to someone, they have someone to contact and we can fix that. Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Very good, that's excellent to hear. Again, this is part of a living, breathing plan that allows us to adapt and make whatever adjustments are needed, again, with safety at a premium. Is there any other comment or discussion on curriculum? Okay. So seeing none, we're gonna move forward into personnel. I'm gonna ask Dr. Charlton if there's anything he has for our public portion.
Thank you, Mr. President. In committee tonight, we discussed amongst confidential matters also the concept of area schools increasing their per diem substitute rates in light of a local substitute staffing shortage. And for that reason, the board has decided to take action on 7.9 tonight. I thank you for your support in considering that action.
Thank you very much, Dr. Charlton. Yes, it's, we are in unprecedented times. How many times do we say that? And one piece of that puzzle is making sure that we have substitutes available to us and we need to stay competitive with the going rate in our area to make sure that we have that. So we are gonna be taking action on increasing our rates. Is there any other comment, any other comment or question on personnel? Go ahead, Mrs. Solagi, before I...
I wanted to know if we needed to approve personnel for tonight to start on the 26th, if our next meeting's on the 27th. Barbara, speak into your microphone. Did you hear me? I didn't know if we needed to approve personnel to start on the 26th, if we don't have another meeting until the 27th.
Only on the item that we just discussed, 7.9, Dr. Grugio ratified the personnel needs that needed to be hired before then.
Okay. Is everyone good? So we're going to, then I'm gonna, gonna ask for a motion on 7.9 to increase our substitute rates and I'm gonna ask Ms. Anaya to read that motion.
Motion to approve temporary pandemic substitute rate of 125 per day for substitute paraprofessionals, 200 per day for substitute teachers, and 235 per day for long-term substitute positions effective 10/26/2020 through 12/31/2020.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move to policy and I'll ask for our policy committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Delabarka's been over here encouraging me to hold on. All right. So good evening, everyone, and I'm going to share with you what took place at our policy meeting. So on Tuesday, October 6th, and excuse me if I'm talking a little bit loud, I just want to make sure everyone can hear me. On Tuesday, October 6th, 2020, members of the Policy Committee met virtually to discuss agenda items. Present at our virtual meeting were Elizabeth White, Amy Elko, Peter Castellano, Kristi Byrd, Marita Sullivan, Dr. Phil Heary, and myself. The following policies were discussed, the following policies and discussions took place at the meeting on October 6th, 2020. The Policy Committee reviewed not one, not two, but eight policies and regulations that will require board approval. Some of the policies and regulations were from the most recent Strauss estimated mandated policy alerts, while others were related to the COVID pandemic and the New Jersey Department of Education, the road back. It is the recommendation of the committee that action is taken on six policies and regulations at both the work sessions and regular board meetings during the month of October. The policies and regulations related to mandated Strauss estimated policy alerts were reviewed and discussed as follows. Policy and regulation number 5200, attendance. Policy number 262, student assessment. Policy and regulation number 5111, eligibility of residents, non-resident students. Policies related to mandated pandemic COVID-19 response and the New Jersey Department of Education road back were reviewed and discussed as follows. Policy number 1648.03, restart and recovery plan, full-time remote instruction. Additionally, policy number 1648, start and recovery mandated revisions were reviewed, but it was determined that all requirements have been included in the August 22nd, 2020 policy adoption. Additionally, policy 2431.3, participation for student athlete safety mandated revisions were reviewed and put on hold. It was determined more information and data is needed from the high school and the policy will be revised at the next policy meeting on November 2nd, 2020. So we had an exciting policy meeting, a busy one, and it went well.
Okay. Anything from Dr. Heary on policy?
This is the first time I've heard policy described as exciting.
Hey, I gotta make everything fun.
No, great report. Just for the Policy Committee's knowledge, policy 2431.1, the heat preparation for student athletes, the questions about the non-recognized NJSI activities has been posed to the high school administration. We're waiting for an answer. Once we get the answer, we'll revisit that policy on November 2nd and we'll be able to go with that in including several other policies that we'll start to address tomorrow. So we're not gonna try to outdo eight, but we should have a fair amount of agenda, policy issues on the next agenda. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else comments or questions on policy? Okay, seeing none, we need to take action on two items of new business and they would be 9.1 and 9.2. May I have a motion on those?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Price.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay. We did finalize our board goals. I see they are on our agenda and as well as our administrative monthly reports. Skipping forward to communications, we have an updated board calendar. Quick legislative update. Just wanted to let everyone know that the school-based youth services, which involves outside counselors in our high school providing services to students and their families, that had been cut from the proposed budget. But districts around the state, including our district, lobbied aggressively to have that restored. So the school-based youth services counselors are once again part of the budget and will be in the schools when our students return. And so, you know, lobbying does work. And we have, you know, it never ends. I'm going to, and you'll see in your packet a letter from our Assembly delegation. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Delabarka, anything? You know, we have some exciting things coming up with New Jersey's school boards.
Thursday night, this week, fellow board members, please remember, you should have gotten, received a message already from the State School Boards Association that our Atlantic County School Board Association meeting is this Thursday at 7:00. And our guest presenter is, let me think, who could that be? Well, maybe it's Mrs. Elko. And we'll be happy to have Amy there and she's gonna be able to ask some of the questions that are coming up from around 23 different districts here in Atlantic County. So we expect a good attendance and I look forward to seeing all of you that evening, virtually. And then the other reminders for all of you is you already should have received reminders and the directions on how to participate in our New Jersey School Boards Association virtual workshop, which is next week, the 20th, 21st, 22nd of October. And the heading on your email, if you haven't recognized it yet, says Call Center at New Jersey School Boards Association. So when you get that, save that. And then next week, on next Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday, you can click on and participate in our annual workshop. And as I said at the last meeting also, the way they're doing it this year, everything is gonna be recorded so that you can actually, if you can't participate in a particular meeting on Tuesday, it will be available all for a whole year from now that you can go back and go to that meeting. So I think that's a great additional benefit from our dues and the money that we pay to attend. So next week is gonna be busy for us and all of you should be able to participate at least one of the days in some of the programs and that'll be great for everything. So thank you. Look forward to seeing you all Thursday night.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Delabarka. I did see that the email came through today on how to participate. I'm looking forward to that and certainly for Thursday night. I can use this opportunity to just, you know, I thank everyone all the time. So I can use this opportunity to thank Mrs. Elko for the excellent service she provides us 24/7, 365. And if she's the presenter Thursday night, let me tell you, it's worth the price of the ticket. So I'm in. So with that, we are going to go to our public comment. We're gonna first hear from anyone who's in person and then we'll move to the telephone. Our normal guidelines are a three-minute comment. And of course, we can't speak normally about personnel and litigation. And it may be the case, if you have a complicated question, that someone may have to get back to you with a detailed answer. So we'll open it up to public comment, first to folks who are in the room, and then we'll move to the phones. Okay, I, no one, hold on, but I have a question, yes.
Oh, just real quick, I'll make it short. I just wanted to say that when you stated about how our board goals were in, you know, approved and everything, I just want to say that I think that it was very, it was great how we all collaborated to get the goal solidified and, you know, placed. And I think it just, it's very appropriate for the season that we're in. Because I think I said the road back about 25 times in my report. So I think it definitely goes along with what the district is doing, all the presentations tonight. And I think it just, it just, I think it felt like it brought everything together. So it was just good to see that in there and it was great to collaborate.
Very good, thank you. So I'm seeing nothing in the room, so we're gonna, we're gonna go to the phones, as they say.
And just a reminder, there is a 30-second delay, so we'll just hold on until we get a caller. And reminder to the public, please do not leave a message. Just continue to call if you don't get through the first time, thank you.
Are we gonna be able to hear that?
Ms. Griffin, please call back.
Please call back, we apologize. We're having technical difficulties, please stand by, if you're old enough to remember that.
Hi, it's Jane Griffin, 232 Heather Club. Two questions or comments. My first one is, I'm a little concerned with that the kids that are gonna be going in person, which my understanding was they were going in person so they could actually get the attention of the teacher. And I'm really concerned that they're gonna have trouble with the virtual at the same time. I've been hearing other districts saying that they're spending half the day trying to get all these online kids signed in. If that turns into an issue, will they consider not doing both at the same time? Because, you know, when my son's at school or the other thing, whenever all the kids are at school, I would hope that they'd be able to get the teacher's attention for that time and not have to spend half the time worrying about, is everybody on, can we see, can you hear, whatnot? So that was my first concern. And the other was that the indoor, the winter sports. I was just curious if that included indoor track, if anybody knows if indoor track is still on? And that was really just it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, two very good questions. I'm looking to my right.
Mrs. Griffin, as an employee of the district, you will be receiving information on the teaching and learning plan, so you understand that situation. And regarding indoor sports, I expressed to the board earlier that I am attending the NJSI executive meeting tomorrow and having a meeting with county superintendents regarding indoor sports. And I will be sharing my decision and information with my administration, which would be communicated with the athletic director and the athletic program.
Thank you, thanks. Very good, thank you for your comment.
Okay, you are now calling live streaming. Go ahead with your name and address, please.
Hi, Brandon Elko. And my address is 20 Cloverhill Circle at Harperstown, Chippewa, New Jersey.
Go ahead with your public comment.
I'm curious if there is a plan. We're going back to hybrid, but my question is, is there a plan to ultimately go back to full in-person learning? And has there been anything drawn out regarding that? Or are we just going to go back to two days, we stay at two days?
I'll take a shot at that, and I'll let the docs fill in. So, sir, basically, the situation is that the reason that we would be at the hybrid 50% capacity is because under the state of emergency declared by the governor, these buildings may only be filled to 50% capacity. So, the short answer would be that at such time as the, that state of emergency is lifted and the governor clears buildings to be filled at full capacity would then be our go-ahead to bring school back to full capacity. Did I capture that correctly? So, we do thank you for that question, because that's a very, that's a very good question, and I'm sure one that, that many folks have.
Shut stuff for them in, if you want to call it. Yeah. They've had this on display the whole time, so.
All right. So, we appreciate the comments. They were very good. So, normally, we do board members. We've gone around the horn once. Board members, good?
Yep.
Okay. There we go. That could have been, maybe it's Domino's pizza, I don't know.
Go ahead with name and address, please.
This is Adam Lepsky, 7111 Tremont Ave.
And your public comment.
I'm, I just was wondering how lunch and recess would be handled over at Miller School?
Okay, thank you. The question was how lunch would be handled, lunch and recess would be handled at Miller School?
We will be serving lunch at the Miller School during the day, scheduled into the period, and recess would be held very cautiously, abiding to the road back to school regulations where social distancing is important and making sure that shared equipment does not occur. Now, Dr. Heary has met with the principals and have, has a little bit more idea on the logistics, and I'm going to allow him to share what he found out.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. I received a revised plan from Mr. Battersby today after discussions with Mr. Beck in terms of the feasibility and what will happen at this point in time is that the talents program will be moving to the gym on a full-time basis. Student desks that are placed instead of lunch tables will be at a distance of six feet apart. There'll be approximately 32 desks being placed on the stage during the lunch shift also, and there'll be 30-minute lunches that will be between 10:40 and 11:10, 11:10 and 11:40, 11:40 and 12:10. There will be a 25% capacity at the Miller School, which would reflect approximately 25 students, that is, under the required threshold. Hybrid and virtual scheduling needing adjustments according to that schedule, and Mr. Battersby has provided us with a schematic of the seating arrangements for the Miller School. I'm sure the caller can't see, but this is in effect, and it will meet all the accommodations that we need for the lunch shifts and at the same time maintain the recommended COVID distances.
Thank you, doctors, and thank you for that comment. Do we have another?
No.
Okay. All right. So, is there any further, any further comments, since we did go around the horn? Any further comment, board members or administration?
I'd just like to make one final comment.
Sure.
Mr. President, again, I wanted to thank everybody, as we've been doing all evening, staff, teachers, parents, residents, for their patience as we go back to school. We are here for you. Call us, the meals are continuing, as you heard, meals, 18,000 meals. We're here. So, not only do we hear you, but we, we are here to work with you, and we encourage you to keep the calls coming and reach out for assistance if you should need it, and that's it. So, everybody have a great week, and we'll, we'll see you here next week. Thanks again.
Very good. Anyone else?
I do, Mr. Castellano. I'd just like to thank the board for their support of this administration and our students and staff during this long road back to school journey. I'd like to personally thank my central office staff, Mr. Santilli, for the endless hours of, first of all, having to switch gears and then from job responsibilities to new job responsibilities, and the endless hours that you put in, you know, putting procedures in place and doing a lot of the writing. And we call him Batman now because he hangs out in his cave, because that's what's been going on. Lots of work going on, putting letters to the pages for submission, and along with my team with Dr. Heary for coming in and jumping in this crazy time and still sticking it out, but that's because we fed him a great breakfast today, so he'll be back tomorrow. And Dr. Charlton, again, learning the new, new position and having the things that probably didn't expect, or any HR director before you had to deal with. And Ms. Anaya for the money that had to be saved and spent and strategized and all that is just truly new and different for all of us, but, you know, hey, we're like brothers and sisters. We have our moments and we had our times, but in the end, together we got through this. And I'd like to publicly acknowledge everyone and know that, you know, it's 24/7, it has been easy, it's tiring, and we're beat, and we're looking forward to October 26th when our students and staff get back in. Also like to acknowledge Mrs. Elko as well for her assistance through all this, because it's been challenging times, and there's nothing written in any of the law books. And some of this stuff, you just got to hash through it, talk it out, and figure it out. Also, thank you to our director supervisors and our principals, but particularly Mrs. Moss, who really stepped in and shared a lot of her knowledge, not only in ELA, but she's got a real knack for a K-12 view of education, academics, RTI, and scheduling. Dr. Graham for helping us with professional development, and Samantha Elko, who talk about who has a knack for scheduling and seeing things and putting pieces together like a Rubik's Cube. I don't know what I would have done without any of these people. So, I thank you all from the bottom of my heart. When we come to the end here and we say, wow, that's our plan, and it's in place, and we're sticking with it, and we're moving forward. We've come a long way, and just the amazing passion and knowledge that folks have in our district, we are all very fortunate to have the expertise that we have in this district, but also the big heart, because that's what it's about. You could be smart up here, but if this heart doesn't beat hard and wide, it just doesn't happen. So, thank you all. I appreciate it. Like I said, I couldn't have done it by myself, so thank you again. Hope I didn't miss anybody? If I did, thank you.
Excellent. All right. So, with that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. By acclamation, we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for a very good meeting, a very important meeting, where we touched on critically important topics, and we will see you all on our regular meeting, which will be two weeks from tonight. We are adjourned.